Freezing, arms. Orders, arms. Left, face. Forward, march.
You're welcome to come in and sit down. Okay. Okay. Today's, we've got fairly lengthy agenda, but I mean, we covered the work session in an hour this morning, so I would assume somewhere there about forty-five minutes to an hour to begin it.
Colors. Hope.
Like what did you see?
Colors. Colors. Hope. Left, face. Present, arms. Sir, the presentation is supposed to be.
Post colors.
Thank you, sir. Orders, arms. Hope. Present, arms. Orders, arms. Left, face. Forward, march. Colors. Hope. Left, face. Present, arms. Sir, North Polyn State colors are presenting the colors.
Amen. And the yellow color, ladies.
Orders. Sir, the presentation is supposed to be.
Post colors.
Orders, arms. Hope. Orders, arms. Left, face. Forward, march.
Okay. When did he come out?
Huh?
When did he come out?
I think.
Okay.
She said she sends it to all the.
Okay, well, my bad. If that's the case, have you, have you got me something signed?
She, she fixed it. She said she went ahead and got approval, but she did back. All you gotta do is sign.
Okay, that's no problem. Yeah, that's no problem.
Oh. All we have is. Yeah, we, uh, all we're gonna. Okay.
I like watching those guys. They make fun of. Yeah.
Hey, we're happy to have you. It's a pleasure to meet you. Yeah. We were worrying about you.
Are you able to, are you able to do USB C in? Okay. If not, we can do it. Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Pop up there once I go, excuse me. Once I go cut it on.
Okay.
So on the schedule. So I'll go ahead and if you wanna get your power line ready.
Yeah, it's ready.
It's ready, okay.
And then I just need a mirror on my screen, I think.
Yeah, well, so these aren't on yet, so you're not gonna be able to see it up here, but after you do that.
Got it. Okay.
I forgot about it. Yes.
Do you want them to leave the pledge allegiance or do you wanna leave it?
No, yeah, I'll do it.
Okay, yes, sir.
Mm-hmm. No, no, not yet. I'll call you.
Yes, sir.
All right, sorry I was a little bit late, but we'll get this ball rolling. Uh, welcome elected officials, same ones we had earlier, I believe. Doris, good to see you. Uh, you following me around today? We had dinner and everything. Have I missed?
Lunch, lunch.
Lunch, that's right. Uh, have I missed him one?
I think that's it.
I think that's it. Uh, good to have you. We had a, we had a good meeting this morning and also during lunch. Good to see everybody. Remember to turn off your telephones, your, your sales, and make sure you put them on silent for us, if I'd appreciate that. And we got Mr. Bryant White to deliver our prayer. I see you back there. You're hiding back there in the corner, aren't you? And tell you a little bit about him. He's a, a sweet, uh, sweet home missionary Baptist church is where you are at right now, right?
Yes.
He's associate pastor there. He's also a chaplain at, uh, Longleaf Hospice. That's a challenging job, but I bet you meet some great people, don't you? A lot of wisdom there. He's married and got one granddaughter. How old is she?
Thirteen.
Thirteen years old. Uh, this was exciting. You're all SEC in track and field. What, uh, what, what, what did you, what'd you do in track and field?
Indoor sixty meters and outdoor triple jump.
So what was your time?
Sixty meters, five, nine, uh, five seconds, nine, nine, five.
There he goes. Well, it's good to have you. And that was at Mississippi State?
Yes.
And you're a photographer, is that correct? Well, good. We'll come up to the podium, if you don't mind, and lead us off in prayer for this meeting, and then we'll call the ROTC to come in and I'll let you know in the house. I'll get everybody to stand.
And again, thank you all for allowing me to come to be a part of this, to, first of all, to allow God to be in this meeting. Uh, I'm just a little country boy from Natchez, Mississippi. Lived in Paulding County for a little while, and now just residing as the assistant pastor, as Mr. Tim has said. So let us bow our heads and allow God's presence in this place. Heavenly Father God, we come as humble as we know how to give you the praise, honor, and glory that's due unto you. We thank you for your love, your kindness, your grace, and all of the mercy you has extended to us down through the years and even this day. Allowing us use and activity of our limbs, allowing us brain cells, Father God, to do what's necessary, do what's right for all the citizens of Paulding County. Asking, Father, that you would continue to bless those, uh, these officials, elected officials, God, that they may continue to do the will of the people. Asking, Father, that you would guide them through this meeting. Father God, I ask that you bless all those that decided to come out, to hear what's going on, to be doers as well. Father, we give you the praise, honor, and glory. I ask, God, that you would continuously bless us physically, spiritually, and financially. This is your humble servant's prayer in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Bryant. And now we'll have the North Paulding come and present the colors and also the pledge allegiance of the flag.
Forward, march. Colors. Hope. Left, face. Present, arms. North Polyn State colors are presenting the colors.
Playing, yes.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which in the Republic, which stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sir, request the permission to post the colors.
You got permission.
Orders, arms. Hope. Present, arms. Orders, arms. Left, face. Forward, march.
Thank you, ladies. The minutes from November the eleventh, two thousand twenty-five work session, and also the eleventh on the twenty-five board of meetings to accept, approve the minutes. I'll need a motion to do that. Oh, I need to bring that up here for, I left you off much, and to bring it on up, Marshall. Thank you. Now they just need, uh, need approval on the minutes from November the eleventh, two thousand twenty-five work session minutes, November the eleventh, twenty-five board meetings. Do I have a motion?
Motion for first.
Ms. Galloway, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dunn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approved. No announcements at this time. Invited guest, Kathleen Lovett regarding Wings and Walmart Drone Delivery. This is gonna be interesting.
Um, well, while we're getting the screen up, uh, good afternoon. My name is Katherine Lovett. I'm with Wing Drone Delivery, based here in Atlanta, Georgia, so not too far. Oh, there we go, we got it, okay. All right, we're in business. Well, good afternoon again. I'm Katherine Lovett. I'm the local policy and community affairs manager for Wing Drone Delivery. I live right down the road in Atlanta, Georgia. Um, I've been in Georgia, this is my third go around in Georgia, but I went to Spelman College for undergrad and Georgia State University for grad school, so know the state of Georgia very well. Can consider myself a pseudo-Georgia girl, even though I'm originally from Nashville, Tennessee. Uh, but I'm very excited to talk to you all today about drone delivery here in Paulding County. Um, to give you a little bit of background on my company and who we are. So Wing as a company, we started back in two thousand twelve as a project with Google in their moonshot factory, and then in twenty eighteen, we became an Alphabet subsidiary. So Google is our sister company. Um, you may have also seen one of our other sister companies in the metro region called Waymo. Um, so the autonomous vehicles that have been driving around Atlanta region are our sister company, and then we are the autonomous drone company that falls under the Alphabet umbrella. Um, in twenty nineteen, we became the first company in the United States to get our Part One Thirty-Five air carrier certification for drone operations from the FAA or the Federal Aviation Administration. Since that time, we started in twenty twenty-two with our partnership with Walmart, where we launched drone delivery in the city of Frisco, Texas, which is about thirty miles north of downtown Dallas. And then we also launched at that same time in Australia with a partnership with DoorDash. Um, since then, uh, we announced earlier this year back in May with Walmart that we would be doing a hundred store expansion across the entire U.S., um, starting with the state of Georgia, also including Tampa, Orlando, and Florida, uh, Charlotte, North Carolina, and then Houston, Texas. And so those metro areas will cover that one hundred store expansion, looking to add more further into twenty twenty-six. Um, since our launch with Walmart, we have grown as a company internationally, but we're really proud to say that as a company, we've done over six hundred thousand commercial deliveries to residential homes, and so we're creeping up on that one million mark, which is really exciting for deliveries. And then for our delivery times, you'll see that shortly in the video. Um, most of our customers, on average, here in the U.S., are getting their orders from the time they place it in the app, from the store to their front door, in about five to fifteen minutes. So keep that in mind as you're thinking about commuting times here in the metro area, how long it takes to go four miles. Just literally yesterday, I went four miles, took me thirty-five minutes to go four miles. So when you think about getting access to food and produce quickly, drone delivery is the solution that we're very proud, proud to partner on with Walmart here in Paulding County. Um, so as I mentioned before, um, we launched that announcement back in May of twenty twenty-five, and so since then, as of last Wednesday, um, we are very proud to say that we are now flying here in the metro Atlanta region at six Walmart locations, um, including the store in Dallas as well as the store in Hiram. So we're very proud that Dallas and Hiram, Georgia, um, are two of the first locations for the entire state of Georgia that offer drone delivery to their residents. And again, when you're thinking about giving residents access to over-the-counter medications, fresh produce, um, and they're going to be able to get that in five to fifteen minutes, we're really excited about that opportunity here for the county. Um, now I'm gonna play a little video for you to show you what the service will look like for your store locations in Dallas and Hiram. This video is actually filmed at our Frisco location, which was the first ever store location for our Walmart partnership. Now what you'll see here, and I'll pause it really quickly. Oh, my goodness, don't know how I jumped ahead. Um, so what you'll see in the video, and I'll pause it just so that for those that may not have seen the nest before, will know what that means when I refer to a nest. So this fenced-in area that you're seeing in the video, um, is what we call a nest, N-E-S-T. We love to have bird and aviation synonyms at Wing. Um, but that is where we house the drones, um, for each of the store locations. So if you, I just drove by the Hiram store on my way here, um, and you would see it's kind of offset in the back of the parking lot where the drones are housed. Now, the reason we have the fencing at the store location is because per our FAA guidance and being a Part One Thirty-Five air carrier, that inside area that the fence covers is an active flight line. So very similar to the tarmac at the international airport or municipal regional airport, where you and I, without FAA credentials, cannot walk on the tarmac. That fenced-in area is, is very similar to that, where it's an active flight line, where we have FAA Part One O Seven professionals working at each store to oversee the operations for the drones, as well as the equipment that's inside of that fenced-in area. A member of Wing, like myself, or even some of our Walmart associates at the stores, we cannot enter that space without being escorted by a member of our Part One O Seventeen, and we have to wear headgear, the proper head equipment, and then safety vests as well. So with that in mind, from the customer experience, you're able to place your order in the Wing app. There's thousands of items available, everything from rotisserie chickens, we had some folks ordering those last week. Um, if you wanted a Red Bull, get like a little bowl of salad delivered, any of those items that fit in that package that you see there, which is called a hex tote, um, can be delivered to your home. Now, as you see, once the order is assigned to your drone, the drone will then autonomously build out its flight plan. Now, as you see, once the order is assigned to your drone, the drone will then autonomously build out its flight plan to your home. The drone climbs to a cruising altitude of about a hundred and fifty to two hundred feet. It's now moving at sixty-five miles an hour to get to your home, again, accomplishing that goal of delivery in five to fifteen minutes. Now you see here, when the drone arrives at your home, it never lands on the ground. It's going to lower the package down gently. It unhooks using a little bit of gravity. The drone is hovering at about twenty-five feet in the air for that delivery process. It will then climb back up to its cruising altitude to then return back to the nest, where it lands on its assigned charging pad to recharge before it goes out for its next order. This is a close-up of the inside of our nest location. So again, this is what you would see for your stores in Dallas and in Hiram. A few things to note about the setup. So you'll see that, um, each of the drones, again, has its own charging pad. So whenever we get questions about battery life, we always let customers and, um, city and county officials know that that's never a concern, because each of our drones is able to charge during operating hours. Currently, we only fly during daylight hours for both of our store locations as well as all of the metro Atlanta region. And so during daylight hours, the drones are able to stay fully charged, um, so we never run into issues of drones running out of battery life while they're out in your communities. Another thing to note is you'll see those big QR codes. Uh, we call them geofiducials, but the drones are able to use those geofiducials or, or QR codes, as some call them, to identify their home charging pad. So we've built this system, as you see here, to make, make sure that the drones are operating at full function at all times, and also are able to navigate safely in and out of each, each nest location without any issues. Um, we also, as I mentioned, you'll see the staff in those yellow vests and the cowboy hats. Again, those are our technicians that work on-site at each store, and each of them are Part One O Seven certified through the FAA to oversee aircraft maintenance and even the operational, um, systems for the charging pads that are inside of the nest. Another thing that you'll likely see at each of those stores as well is this structure here, which is called an autoloader. So as I referenced before, for the, um, Walmart employees that work at the Dallas and Hiram store, um, typically they do not have their FAA certification, which is okay. We've created this autoloader system that you will see typically located near or adjacent to the curbside pickup area to allow for a hands-free delivery system that will allow the Walmart employees to fulfill orders for curbside and delivery, um, orders at each store, to be able to walk out to the curbside pickup area. They'll be able to hook the package on what I call the little praying mantis arms. There's a hook in the center of that, and they'll be able to then walk away. The drone will then be able to fly over from the nest, again, using those, uh, big QR codes to identify your, your order, and then it picks up the package hands-free and heads off to the resident's home. So you may see these, and we get questions like, what is that thing that's out there by itself? It's called an autoloader, and it's a hands-free system that we've created to make sure we're keeping Walmart employees safe, but still accomplishing that goal of getting you your items in thirty minutes or less from store to door. Um, now, as I mentioned before, I just wanted to show you a little bit of, of the, the safety features that come into our operating system for all of our locations here at the metro Atlanta region. Um, again, we are a Part One Thirty-five air carrier at Wing. We are federally regulated through the FAA, just the same as American Airlines, Delta Airlines. We are an OEM, which means that we design, manufacture, and operate all of our drones in-house. So we are considered an air carrier or an aviation company, just like Delta, American, and others. So as part of that, we also have a team of pilots who oversee operations for each of our store locations here in the metro Atlanta region. Again, all of our team, um, team members on our flight operations team have their Part One O Seven and are able to monitor the airspace that the drones are moving in at all times. Now, as you see on the map here, that purple circle that's in the center is what we call the Mode C veil. And basically, that's the thirty aeronautical miles that, um, covers the entire Atlanta metro region. And so within that area, you'll notice that we have certain areas that are blocked out for the larger, of course, international, um, Dobbin's Air Force Base and some of the larger airports. But in addition to that, we also make sure that we're not operating within three nautical miles of any public use runways, landing areas. So that would include, for example, we know that Paulding County does have, um, an airport here in the area. Um, our team on our flight operations team is in coordination with your current, um, airport manager and their team in real time to make sure that, uh, we keep that safe distance and we set up that geo-fencing around the airport so we're not entering any airspace. In addition to that, we also make sure that we're, we're helping to support the environment. Um, so if there are any wildlife parks, nature preserves, um, large bodies of water that have been protected by the government, we also are able to restrict those areas in our system to make sure that the, the drones do not enter any active, um, restricted airspace. Um, so all of that comes into play as at how we operate, um, as a company at Wing to make sure that we're keeping you safe on the ground, but also keeping our drones safe in the air when it comes to a very busy, um, aviation area like the metro Atlanta region. Um, now, for those that have not seen the drone, this is just a little close-up of what it looks like. Now, Wing, we are very big on safety. That is the number one reason that you'll hear a lot of people say, um, why we're the best in the industry, but, um, it's something that we're really proud of. And so just to call out two really quick safety features for you. Um, the aircraft itself only weighs about eleven pounds. It's literally wrapped in styrofoam and recycled plastic, and it's all electric, so there's no CO2 emissions. The other thing to note is that the weight capacity for the drones is about two and a half pounds. So as a company, we're not going to replace your full, like, Amazon order or big grocery orders, but our goal is to get you those small items that you need really quickly. Now, if you remember in the video, you probably saw that tether that was there for the delivery process for loading and unloading. Now, if the drone during delivery at a residential home, let's say Miss Wilson's cute little, you know, Yorkshire terrier runs outside and tries to grab on that tier, um, that tether, anything that pulls on that more than one time, or if it gets caught or snagged, the drone will simply send a signal out to the pilot, and then the drone will autonomously release that tether from the aircraft. So we've built that in as a safety feature to make sure that the drone stays in the air at all times. And again, we keep everyone safe on the ground, both at the store and during the delivery process. We're very proud as a company at Wing that for all of the locations here in the U.S. and abroad, in Australia, Ireland, Finland, and in the UK, we have not had any incidents or accidents, no, um, property damage, no bodily harm for any of the cities that we're operating in. And a big part of that comes into play with our safety features that we've built into the aircraft, from everything to the styrofoam to that simple little tether that you all see. Um, just another quick call-out for safety. Um, we also have an antenna built into each aircraft. All of our aircrafts are registered with the FAA, just like you would for a Delta or American flight. And all of our, um, aircrafts are able to receive what we call ADS-B in, so they're able to detect and avoid crewed aviation. So whether it's a helicopter that's in the area, uh, another drone operator, our aircrafts are able to monitor the airspace using that antenna. And then on the back end, our pilots, very similar to air traffic controllers, are also monitoring the airspace in real time to make sure that they're keeping our aircrafts safe. You'll also notice well that, um, our pilot team is also monitoring actively the weather conditions for each store. So we know that the metro Atlanta area is very big. It could be raining in Loganville and sunny and bright here in Paulding County. And so as part of that, our pilot team is able to monitor and, and we can adjust operations by location, depending on weather conditions. Now, as you'll see in the video as well, we're able to fly in rain, um, and winter conditions. Even last week with those very cold thirty-degree temperatures, we're still able to fly. Uh, we will pause if there are, are issues with ice. So if we get below freezing and there's icy conditions, we will pause operations. Same as well for severe weather such as thunderstorms, heavy gusts, um, any kind of, uh, hail, lightning, those type of things. We pause and we notify customers in real time through the app. Well, um, another big, important feature that we always like to call out is our privacy. So we understand that drones, um, for a lot of communities are new. And at Wing and Walmart, we want to make sure that customers understand and know that their privacy is paramount to what we do. Um, we always like to ensure that, that customers know that there is no audio, nor is there any live feed on any of our aircrafts. So when your neighbor is getting a drone delivery next door, we can neither hear you nor can we see you on that aircraft. Um, the, the cameras that are used on our drones are solely for those big QR codes that you all saw in those early images to identify their landing locations when they get to the store. The resolution on those is very similar to an old nineteen ninety-seven Nokia phone that has like Snake on it, if you remember those. Um, so again, just wanna reassure, um, you all as you talk to your residents that the drones do not have any live audio nor, um, any feed of images that anyone from the pilots or like someone at the stores are able to see. And it's solely used for depth perception, so measuring their distance from the ground, and then that navigation going in and out of the store locations. Then last thing to note, because we always know this is a really big question, is about the sound profile. Uh, so this image that you're looking at right now is showing you the two differences. One, when the drone is at the store for that loading height and then the delivery height. So, uh, for both loading and for delivery, the drone is typically going to be between twenty to twenty-five feet in the air. And so you'll see on the image, and I don't know if my pointer, there it goes. Oh, and I broke it, sorry. Okay, hopefully it comes back. Um, well, as we're, is it gonna come back up?
Did it come up?
No, it's still in. I'm not sure what I touched. Well, so when the drone is at that height of twenty to twenty-five feet in the air, the sound profile is, um, uh, typically it's about sixty-five DBAs. Oh, there we go. And so at that height of twenty to twenty-five feet, the drone is a little bit quieter, as you'll see on the scale, than a sedan that's moving on your street at forty miles an hour. Um, and then when the drone is loading, or when it's at its cruising altitude of about a hundred and sixty-five feet, um, the drone is quieter actually than a microwave or a dishwasher that's in the next room. So, um, when we think about residential sounds, you typically know what a leaf blower sounds like. You typically know what your neighbor's lawnmower sounds like. So we always let communities know when they're first getting drone delivery that this is just a new sound that's coming in to your communities. But we've specifically designed our drones through rigorous testing to make sure that they're blending into everyday neighborhood sounds for residential communities. Um, so with that, just as you're thinking about the future of drone delivery here in Paulding County, um, some of the things that we are excited for, all of the locations that we've just launched here in Georgia, um, is seeing the benefits that we've provided to residents in Texas now come to life here in the state of Georgia. As I mentioned before, most of our customers are using our items, uh, are using our service to get access to fresh food, um, and produce from the Walmart store. Um, for Texas, our number one item that people order is produce. Blueberries, strawberries, the bags of salads, spinach, those pre-made salads or the pre-made bowls of fruit. Um, the second number one item, top item on our list that people order is over-the-counter medication from the Walmart pharmacy. So, um, typically this time of year, we see an uptick for cold and sinus medication. Um, you know, the, the kids come home from school, there's a runny nose, you don't have time to go out to the store. We can get that, you know, children's cold medicine to you in, you know, ten, fifteen minutes. Another thing too is that we've seen a lot of communities really adopt this service, um, to where now in Texas, we're doing about two thousand orders a day for our, each of our store locations, and we are in over nineteen locations across the North Texas region. So that just shows you from the year ago when we launched those locations to now that we're doing two thousand a day, um, people are really using this service because it offers convenience, it helps to alleviate the stress with traffic and road congestion, and allows them to gain access to the goods and food that they need really quickly. Um, so then from the customer perspective, uh, this is just showing you what the order experience would look like. So again, uh, for the new store locations here in Georgia, you would just go to either your Google Play or your Apple Store, um, and you would type in Wing Drone Delivery. Once you download the app and get it set up, you can put in your address to check to see if you were eligible for a delivery. For the Dallas and the Hiram store locations, um, our current delivery range from each store is four miles. So within that four-mile range, um, you can check to see if you are eligible for a delivery by drone. If you are, it'll let you know, and then you're able to peruse the full catalog of items that are available. Few things to note, you will also notice in that catalog that we do not deliver alcohol products or any flammable items. So for example, hand sanitizer is considered a flammable item, and so per the FAA, we do not deliver those type of goods, nor tobacco products. Um, we also do not currently deliver prescription medication. As mentioned before, because the aircrafts do not have cameras on them to identify you as the owner of a prescription, we cannot deliver prescription medication, only items that are available over the counter through the Walmart pharmacy. Once you've checked out for your items, you're also able in step two to suck what we call your delivery zone. So depending on your residential property, some homes may have a delivery spot available in the front and backyard. Some it could be the back, some it could be the front, just depends. We always let residents know that if you're able to stand in either your front yard or your backyard, you look up and you can see clear sky, um, no trees, no power lines. Um, also, you're not trying to put your delivery spot in like the pool or anything like that. We're typically able to get a delivery into you. Then from there, you're able to track your order from the store to your home, and you literally see your drone flying through the air as it gets to your house. And then you get a notification to let you know when to come outside to receive your order. Now, for first-time orders, you have to be at the residential home to place that order. Again, just confirming that you actually live at that residential property. And then after that, if you need to, you're able to order from elsewhere, similar to an Uber Eats or DoorDash experience. And then, as you can see, the rest, um, you've seen in the video. Another thing at Wing that we always love to just share and highlight, um, for you all as the commissioners as you're thinking about the future of drone delivery here in Paulding County. Um, Wing, as in, um, again, an aviation company, we really are invested in growing this industry. Drone delivery, we know, um, is new to the U.S., but not new to other countries. And so we do a lot of work, and that's, um, my favorite part of my job, in STEM education, community outreach, and workforce development. So now that we have launched here in Georgia, we are really excited to be doing work with local high schools, um, the universities like Georgia Tech, Kennesaw State University, even summer camps as well. So, um, as you all think about programs that may be coming online for two thousand twenty-six, please feel free to reach out to me. Um, your team has my contact information, but we're always happy to go out to the schools or to come out and to connect on programs to help educate your residents on how, um, drone delivery is not just a one-time thing that you do. Um, this is really the, the future and where we're headed as, as a society, and we wanna make sure that we're building up a qualified and skilled workforce to help to support that group. Um, so with that, I can pause to see if there are any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Lovett. Any questions from the board?
I've got a quick one. I know that it is ill to shoot down a drone.
Yes.
And I have tried to get that word out a little bit in the community. Um, can you, uh, talk just briefly? I know we don't like really pin on a negative mouth, but if somebody was getting a little crazy and shoot down a drone, it's pretty serious, I think, isn't it?
Yes, ma'am. So, um, we always encourage people to remember that it's the Federal Aviation Administration who regulates, um, drone operations here in the United States. So just like you cannot shoot at a Delta Airlines or American Airlines, um, aircraft with a, a shotgun or handgun, um, you should not do that with drones as well. Um, thankfully, we have not had that incident with us. And I always tell people that if we can work and operate in some of the more remote parts of Texas, um, and, and I did a lot of that work last year in Texas, I feel very optimistic that Georgia will, will be okay. So, but I always just remind people that if you do the crime, you do federal time. Yeah.
Ms. Lovett, is it equipped with cameras for any kind of security or surveillance?
No. So the aircrafts do not have any live cameras or live feed nor audio. So we do get questions about, um, policing. Our aircrafts are only for delivery and for commercial package delivery only, and we are rated as such by the FAA. The cameras do have optical lenses on them, but those are used for depth perception. So that's how the drone knows that it's twenty feet from the ground when it's doing that loading and delivery process. In addition to those big QR codes that you saw in the photos, they use those for navigation in and out of the store locations.
I noticed on one of your deliveries, it just delivered, it looked like it was delivering to a field, not a home.
Oh, no. So I'm happy to share the video, and I can go back. So for, um, we, we deliver to residential homes, so we've done over six hundred thousand residential deliveries, um, to customers. And so for that delivery process here, you'll see, um, this is a, a neighborhood in Texas. This is Frisco, Texas, where, um, this, a very nice customer, she allowed us to film this at her home. But this is a real customer that ordered in a suburban area in Frisco, Texas.
Any other questions?
Have a comment. It's very exciting to see this, but it's also very scary at the same time.
Understood, understood.
Why?
Yeah, why is it scary?
Um, it's kinda like when you were six years old and you went to Disney World and saw the Jetsons and microwaves and...
When I was six, Disney World... When I was six, Disney World was scared of me. I wasn't scared of them.
It scares me.
Well, I always remind people, so if you think back to 2010, and if someone said the word DoorDash or Uber or Lyft to you, those things didn't exist. So, but now fast forward to 2025, many people in this room probably don't think twice taking an Uber to the airport. But back in 2010, if someone said, hey, you want to get in the car with me and trust that I'm going to take you to the airport and not take you somewhere else, and you're like, absolutely not. But now we don't really think about it. So I I kind of always give that analogy of we're on that next crest and turning point for technology and transportation when it comes to drones and autonomous vehicles that I'm really excited. We're like, my kids and grandkids will be like, alright, mom, I'm going out, and they're going to take an air taxi to go out. So we're, as we continue to evolve, I totally understand that the newness of it is, it's, there's a little scariness to it of just the unknown factor. But that's where Wing, again, we are really passionate about working hand in hand with you all and your communities to help educate residents, to remove that fear, to let people know that this is something that is in addition to your quality of life and not something that is a detractor.
Any others? Thank you, Ms. Lovett.
Thank you so much for your time.
Did you have something? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. It was a pleasure.
And you gonna hang around for a while, because I bet there's people out there that have questions. Next, we'll look at the bid awards. First one is to action to authorize a purchase of a new air and light truck apparatus for the Paulding County Fire Rescue in the amount of five hundred ninety-eight thousand eight hundred and five dollars and eighty-nine cents for the department, from the Department of Capital Outlay Physical Year Twenty-Six Budget. This purchase will be completed using the HGAC contract number FS twelve dash twenty-three price. Funding will be allocated through SPOS and the fire tax. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Caker. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Galloway. All in favor, say aye. No opposed. Next is action to approve the purchase of a wireless mobile column lift from AHI Heltra, utilizing the Sourcewell contract in the amount of fifty-seven thousand five hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-two cents. This funding will be allocated through the general fund. Do I have a motion to approve? Mr. Dunn, is there a second? Mr. Snyder, all in favor, say aye. No opposed. Next is action to approve the purchase of ten lift lifts from a vehicle services group utilizing the GSA contract in the amount of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars and seventy-two cents. Funding will be allocated through the general fund. Do I have a motion to accept? Motion to approve. I'm Mr. Snyder. Is there a second? Mr. Dunn, all in favor, say aye. Next is action to approve the purchase of a tire equipment for the new fleet maintenance building in the amount of a hundred and thirty-two thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars and forty-two cents from Mohawk Lift, utilizing the Sourcewell contract. Funding will be allocated from the general funds. Is there a motion to approve? Ms. Galloway, is there a second? Ms. Caker, all in favor, say aye. Next, action to approve the purchase of twenty-five in-car camera systems in the amount of two hundred and seventy-three thousand five hundred dollars from Moller Rover for the sheriff's department, utilizing the Sourcewell contract. Funding will be allocated from SPOS. Is there a motion to approve? Ms. Caker, is there a second? Mr. Snyder, all in favor, say aye. Next is action to award the purchase of a hundred and fifty body worn cameras from Moller Rover Solutions for the sheriff's office in the amount of five hundred and ninety-four thousand eighty-two dollars. Funding will be allocated from the general fund. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Dunn, is there a second? Ms. Galloway, all in favor, say aye. Next is action to approve the purchase of an object first backup storage with three years of support from SHI in the amount of fifty-five thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty-seven cents. Funding will be allocated through the general fund. Do I have a motion for approval? Ms. Galloway, is there a second? Mr. Snyder, all in favor, say aye. At this time, there's no reports from committee and departments, public participation on agenda items. And we do have one, Mr. Pownell, if you'll come up to the podium, make your, you know how this goes, you've been up here before, so you know what to do.
Good afternoon. My name's Todd Pownell, and I'm here to talk to you this afternoon about Agenda Number Twenty-Eight. That is the text amendment that the planning and zoning did approve. Well, they didn't approve, they recommended denial back on November eighteenth. Is this microphone on, Mr. Phillips? So anyway, the, they recommended denial back on November eighteenth. This is for an overlay district for Technology Park and data centers. This particular one today happens to be on about three hundred and eighteen acres off Coal Lake Road. Really backs up to the back of my place. Last week, on Tuesday, December second, at three forty-eight PM, I did a open records request. And on Friday, I got an open records request stating that I would get my open records this coming Wednesday, which is tomorrow at five PM. So I haven't got them yet. Before the meeting started, I was told there was a little something going on that we needed to wait a couple more days before I got the open records, and I'm okay with that. Sometimes we have to to wait a minute, and I'm okay with that, and I just want you to, want you to know that, okay? But I'm here today, I'm here today to ask you to deny it. I'd like for you to deny Number Twenty-Eight. However, if you're not willing to deny it today, I'm going to ask that you will table it until your second meeting in January. Table Number Twenty-Eight until your second meeting in January. I had to wait a little bit for some open records and and if you guys could wait a little bit to table it and let us look at some things, I sure would appreciate it. My neighbors would appreciate it. But I'd like you to table it if if that's what you would, you know, consider doing. That would give us some time to take a look at a couple things. I I do have a friend of mine that was hired from a company in Texas to work on data centers here, and I had the privilege to go out and take a look at some data centers not too far from here, about six of them. And I've got some questions and some concerns about some things. And I'd like to talk to a couple commissioners about it and when they have some time, and I know you guys are always busy. So I'd like to talk to you about that. But I'd like to ask for you to table Number Twenty-Eight to the second meeting in January. However, if you decide that denying is not good, and you decide that tabling is not good, I would ask that you, if you go to approve it, that you would amend the special stip that talks about a two-hundred-foot buffer to say a two-hundred-foot non-disturbed buffer. A two-hundred-foot non-disturbed buffer is what I would be looking for. And that's what my neighbors would be looking for. I would much rather you deny it or table it for a few weeks, and then let's talk about it again in January. There are some concerns that I've got on it, and one of the things was, it talks about how ordinances are, how, what we do with ordinances as far as how we handle the ordinances that maybe the data centers may not abide by. So one of the concerns is, it just says, we're going to handle it like we handle all other ordinances. Well, I know how we handle all other ordinances, not all of them. But sometimes an ordinance doesn't get handled until somebody calls in and complains about it. And then it gets handled, okay? The problem with that is, a lot of times, we have people that don't want to call in because they don't want to put their name and information on that complaint, because then that's part of open records. And when we do open records, we can redact all kind of stuff from the people. We can redact all kind of stuff from the companies and different people out there. But when it comes to our own citizens doing a complaint, we don't redact that. So it's an issue. And I think if Mr. Phillips remembers, January will be our anniversary of fifteen years ago. You and I talked about that when I was up there. So it's something that's important to me, that we kind of work on that. But I'm asking for you to deny it. Would like to see you table it. And if you decide that you're going to approve it today, two-hundred-foot non-disturbed buffer, we would ask that you do that. And then I can tell by the look on a couple people's face, one that I know very well, that my time is up. I know it, I know it's up. So I will do this. I wish you all Merry Christmas, wish you a Happy New Year. I appreciate it and hope you all have a great day. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Pownell. Appreciate that. We'll take that in consideration. The next thing that we are on consent agendas, there are seven listed, and the time is up. For the seven consent agendas, I need a motion to accept or approve. Do I have a motion? Ms. Galloway, is there a second? Ms. Caker, all in favor, say aye. No business, old business at this time. Number sixteen of our new businesses is action to action to authorize the board to approve and execute the application of the GDOT Physical Year Two Thousand Twenty-Six Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant, LMEG, in the amount of two million five hundred and fifty-four thousand three hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighty-three cents. And the required thirty percent match funds of seven hundred and sixty-six thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars and five cents, which will be allocated from the general fund. This project is located in post one, two, and three. Do I have a motion to approve? Mr. Dunn, is there a second? Ms. Caker, all in favor, say aye. Next will be action to authorize a chairman to execute a letter to support to GDOT for a single lane runabout at the intersection of SR Six Business. That's Macklin Road and Butler Industrial Drive, PI zero zero one nine eight nine six. This project is located in post one. Do I have a motion? Mr. Dunn, is there a second? Ms. Galloway, all in favor, say aye. Is my time up? Okay, next is action to adopt, adopt a sign, a joint resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-four of the governing authority to, of Bartow and Paulding County in support of exploring the feasibility of a new intersection on Interstate Seventy-Five North at, of the Third Army Road. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Dunn, is there a second? Mr. Snyder, all in favor, say aye. Next is action to recommend the Board of Commissioners award a renewal of flow monitoring service to the ADS Environmental Services in the amount not to exceed three hundred and fifteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars for the period of December the first of twenty-five through November the thirtieth of two thousand twenty-six from the renewal and extension fund. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Snyder, is there a second? Ms. Caker, all in favor, say aye. Next is action to approve the development agreement with Blue River Development LLC in Paulding County for developer contribution to the Cadillac reroute project on the Gateway North Phase One. The project is located in post three. Do I have a motion to approve? Ms. Galloway, is there a second? Mr. Snyder, all in favor, say aye. Okay, thank you, Virginia. I didn't get a second. Did I get a second? All in favor, say aye. Next is to action to enter into a contract with Brennan Jones Engineering Associates LLC for engineering support on the Paulding County Jail Gravity Sewer Screen Project in the amount of seventy thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars. Funding will be allocated through the general fund. The project is located in post two. Do I have a motion to approve? Ms. Caker. Is there a second? Ms. Galloway, all in favor, say aye. Next is action to authorize, the action to authorize a chairman to execute options to purchase right away for the sale of realty for partial fifty-four, partial ID number is zero three one dot two dot four dot zero dot two seven dot quad zero in the amount of sixty thousand dollars. Partial sixty, which is partial ID on zero three one dot two dot four dot zero four four dot zero 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 in the amount of ninety-nine thousand dollars. And partial sixty-one, partial ID zero three one dot two dot four dot oh oh six dot oh 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 in the amount of a hundred and fifteen thousand for the Cedar Crest Road Riding Project, which is PI oh oh one three seven oh oh. Funding will be from the SPOS with remaining up to and with the reimbursement of up to five million dollars from the Federal Highway Administration. The project is located in post one and in. The project is located in post one and in post four. Do I have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Snyder, and is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dunn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next is action to adopt resolution twenty-twenty-five dash forty-five, asking the state delegation to approve a technology fee for the magistrate court. Is there a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Ms. Caker, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Galloway, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Action to adopt resolution twenty-twenty-five dash forty-six, asking the state legislation to approve a technology fee for the state court. Is there a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Ms. Caker, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dunn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, next is action to adopt ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash whole prohibiting the transfer and sale of domestic animals in certain public areas, uh, in accordance with the pro, uh, prohibiting of the Georgia House, that's bill number three-three-one, uh, effective July the first of two thousand twenty-five. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
From Mr. Caker and Mr. Sni- I mean, Ms. Galloway and, and Mr. Snyder, second?
Second.
Ms. Galloway, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next is, uh, action to adopt resolution twenty-twenty-five dash forty-seven, confirming the executive session of the purpose of real estate. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Snyder, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Galloway, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
These are the, uh, planning and commission zones recommendations on the next several items. Uh, the first one is twenty-twenty-five dash twenty-five dash C, Application in Neebo Road Properties LLC. Requesting to rezone approximately forty-three acres from an A-one agricultural district to an R-one, which is a rural residential district for the purpose of developing of twenty-eight lots. Uh, applicant has also requested several variances, properties located in landlot one-two-three-one and one-two-nine-oh, District Two, Section Three, proposed site is located on north side of Neebo Road, uh, east of the Villarica Highway, which is SR, uh, sixty-one, that's in post two. The recommendation for the planning and zoning was a denial for two to one. Staff recommendation, uh, what?
Just to clarify, I think, the, the, the agenda notes that the recommendation is for denial, but in any event, the Board of Commissioners chooses to approve, staff is recommending four stipulations with that. In the event the VOC departs from the denial recommendation. So at this time, just Chairman, I would entertain a motion on this item.
So is there a motion to approve on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to table until our, what is it, second, our second meeting in January, give us a month.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Galloway, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, same here. Next is, uh, twenty-eight, which is a text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance. Uh, Title Two, zoning, uh, chapter two-twenty, uh, dash forty, section two-twenty dash forty dash oh-two, huh, dot oh-two, boundaries. Recommended on this one was denial for two to one. And is there a motion from, to accept or deny?
Mr. Chairman, I vote to approve with, uh, an added stipulation of the two-hundred-foot non-disturbed buffer.
And is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Snyder, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, that's actually the conclusion of our regular business, uh, there's no, uh, public participation on agenda items.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize. One of the things, I think, the agenda is a little bit off. I think we do have public participation on non-agenda items, although it's listed as executive session. Uh, I think the public participation on non-agenda items would be Mr. Larry Smith regarding neighborhood street signs, if Mr. Smith is present.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Smith, and you know, there's five, five minutes on that, and, uh, address your questions to the chair.
Good afternoon. I'm, I'm Larry Smith, and I live in Carriage Oaks subdivision, here in Paulding County. Carriage Oaks, if you're not familiar with it, is the subdivision, the first subdivision off of Pine Valley, right across from Travis, where Travis Tritt lives. Uh, recently, um, the street signs, decorative street signs and stop sign post was removed by the Paulding County Transport, Department of Transportation. Background here is, in two thousand thirteen, Carriage Oaks obtained a formal Paulding County DOT permit for decorative, uh, traffic signs. Under that permit, our neighborhood selected permit option two, where the county approved the decorative post purchased and installed by the HOA. And the DOT agreed to maintain the traffic signage and routinely inspected the decorative posts. Uh, these signs were fully permitted, compliant, and installed exactly according to the county requirements. Our HOA paid over four thousand eight hundred dollars out of our own money to professionally ma- manufacture and install these decorative assemblies. These were not homemade or unapproved fixtures, they were county-approved, infrastructure, and installed under a valid permit. My wife and I re- we routinely walk the neighborhood, and with the exception of one sign, uh, where the two bolts have come loose, uh, all the decorative signs were straight, intact, upright, fully functional at the time that they were removed. I was told through our commissioner that the DOT removed these signs because several of the signs were damaged, and that's not accurate. The only sign that there was no damage, it was just one of them, two bolts had come loose. Um, so, um, option two under the DOT requires that the document, uh, which signs were damaged, notify the HOA or neighborhood representative, and allow the HOA, uh, a time to replace the decorative post. Uh, none of those steps occurred. There was no notice, no documentation, no opportunity to repair anything, and no communication with representatives of our subdivision. Instead, the DOT removed all the decorative timed part, post, and with standard metal, metal posts, and effectively wiping out our investment, uh, that we made under good faith, under a count, under a valid county permit, excuse me. We're here not to argue aesthetics. Um, Carriage Oaks completely complied with the county standards at the time, maintained those signs with that one exception, the sign falling down, and, uh, our neighborhood spent thousands of dollars on improvements. And, um, effectively, those, uh, what the DOT did was render, uh, I think, it decreased our, our property value. I don't think they followed their own procedures in doing that, but I could be wrong. So we're here simply asking that they, uh, permit, that we fix the signs, replace them, uh, we'll be, we're willing to cooperate any way we can to make sure that they get put back up. So thank you for this time, and thank you for your service to Paulding County.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. We, uh, thank you for your comments, and we will discuss that, and, uh, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if the Director Mike wants to say what he feels about that.
All right.
Afternoon. Uh, I talked with Post Commissioner Galloway, and we discussed this, uh, situation earlier this morning, and, um, I think we both felt that it was probably prudent to address this in this meeting. Uh, when it comes to decorative sign posts, there's the post itself, and there's also the signs itself. The, the importance of signs is especially is to essentially, you know, regulate, warn, guide folks. It's not so much the sign post, it's the signs. I believe those signs, um, they had passed their retroreflectivity standards, and that is essentially, signs have a age. They last a certain amount of years based on, uh, what you can see, and again, it's not really during the daylight, it's at night when the retroreflectivity is important. You can't really tell a lot of times that a sign is not, um, does not meet standards, it's at night when you, um, that's when it's noticeable. And that's what, um, I believe our sign crew folks noticed, those signs were not meeting the reflectivity standards. Again, you know, when it comes to decorative sign posts in those subdivisions, it's typically the, the maintaining, uh, subdivision, they are responsible for maintaining and installing the, in the signs on those decorative sign posts. I think in this particular subdivision, there was no HOA contact. There was an HOA contact back in two thousand thirteen, I believe that person moved away in two thousand twenty. So we'd not know who to go to. I know our sign supervisor had reached out to the person who originally made the request to fix these broken street bracket, a couple, few times, and eventually got a response, I believe, and again, was told by, there was no HOA, and spoke to a couple of other folks, and it was also told the same thing. So I think that's where we're at right now. Um, do have a proposal for Mr. Smith. Even talking with Post Commissioner Galloway, we think, um, we might have a solution to hopefully, uh, um, rectify this. But again, that's kinda where we're at, and again, I'd like to speak to him after the meeting if he's interested.
So the damage on the sign was really the illumination, so you couldn't see it at night?
Right, it's illumination standards, and, you know, again, this particular type of, um, reflect, reflective material, and again, that's what signs are for. It's, you know, again, you're supposed to see it. Um, it lasts eight to ten years, that type of material. In Georgia, it's probably a little bit less. We have very intense sunlight and heat and humidity. And again, that, you figure, you know, ten, eight to ten years from two thousand thirteen, obviously, that was a couple of years back. So, um, again, we have to replace signs all the time. We do this quite often because, again, they, they have an age, and they age out, and then we have to replace it.
Any questions, board, for Mr. Jones? Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. So after three o'clock, uh, for adjournment, uh, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, all right.
I have, I, I just wanted to, I just wanted to welcome Mrs. Jill Phillips. I think this might be her first time visiting us. So, welcome Jill, Merry Christmas.
Glad to have you, Jill.
Yeah, she's even dressed Christmasy.
It's Jason Phillips' wife, by the way.
This is the first time she's come to a Board of Commissioners meeting, uh, in a, a venue for a few years, so glad you could finally see what I do.
All the fun you get, right?
And I hear she came to deliver Christmas presents. Good to have you. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Ms. Galloway, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Caker, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Merry Christmas.
Yep, and we are adjourned. Thanks for coming.